Good morning. I can't hear because I'm on this side here, but welcome to Bremerton Chamber of Commerce's Eggs and Issues. We are back to Eggs and Issues, thanks to those who participated last time in our candidate cafe. We learned that we lost a bit of history behind Eggs and Issues and the chairman was duly informed on the history of meeting with the Bremer family over breakfast to hear out comments and concerns of citizens who live in our fair city. And so we have duly resurrected that name after one mishap. So thank you for that. We have invited our candidates for city council at each race today. And the following will be our format. Each candidate will get a three-minute opening statement. Our friend over here and my partner in crime on the board of directors, Betty Skinner, has been elected your time keeper. She will let you know. And the opening and closing statements, when you have 30 seconds left, you will see that yellow sign right there. And when you have 10 seconds left, you will see red. Please finish that current sentence and we will move on from there. I will ask questions collected from the audience. Each candidate will have one minute to respond. If a question is directed to a specific candidate, the other candidates will have an opportunity to respond to the question. Each candidate will also get a two-minute closing statement. In front of you, you will see two green cards. These are your challenge cards. You are allowed to raise a challenge card during an opponent's answer to a question. Just for those of you who participated in our primaries, like the primaries, if you raise your challenge, that will be noted. At the end of each person's response, we will go back to the challenger to allow them either to add on to the original response or to challenge something that another candidate had used. So we will allow you to use those throughout to speak with each other, even though it's not necessarily some challenging somebody in your particular race. The time allotted for the challenge responses, one minute each, the same as the amount of time provided to answer the questions. Any questions on our format today? Challenge cards, one more time? Absolutely. This wasn't here last time. So they're two green. If during any point during one of the questions, you wish to have additional time to respond, react, etc., you have two chances to do that today. You may raise that card, at which point I will note it, probably come take it from you, so I don't forget at the end, so that I can come back to you for a response. You are limited to only two during today's forum. Yes, Anna?
Has everyone muted their cell phone?
Ah, well, let's hope so. We don't want to stop you from your train of thought. And I will make sure I've done that myself. Thank you for the reminder.
And on your one-minute question, the answer applies. We're going to do a 10-second countdown.
Thank you, Betty. Perfect. That takes care of today's format. First, before I get you to your respective opening comments, we'd like to welcome all the candidates we have in person today and virtually. Jeff Coughlin, Melissa Watkins, we had a spot and I believe there's going to be here Matthew Adams, not here. His challenger is with us, we assume, Michael Goodnow, Anna Mokler, and Eric Younger. So we will start right here next to me with Jeff with opening comments. Jeff, you will get three minutes. Pay attention to Betty and your time begins now. Sorry, I'll not. You all aren't touching. Come up here, or how do you all feel about passing?
I prefer to pass it myself.
Is everybody okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah. Test one, two. There we are. All right. So I guess thank you first to the chamber for hosting this debate again and for everybody for being here and everybody online over Zoom. I guess just thanks for voting and being a part of local democracy. So my name is Jeff Coughlin. A little about me, I grew up as a big science nerd. I just love solving problems. And so I got a bachelor's in physics with a minor in Spanish and eventually a PhD in astronomy. I was lucky to go to work for a big NASA mission called Kepler and got to be able to analyze the big data to find some small planets. I've also kind of always had a love to bringing people together. So I served as president for a bunch of organizations in undergrad, grad school. And then I like to joke, I was a science nerd who could talk to people. So I ultimately became a director, science office director for Kepler for a number of years there. I've been attending evening classes in Seattle the other year. So I got a project management certificate from the University of Washington and also an actual project management professional certification from the Project Management Institute. And so professionally over my career, I really have experienced analyzing data, using statistics, making decisions, bringing together government, private organizations, individuals from the project management side, just knowing how to get stakeholders together and all the little pieces that need to come together to make big projects happen. Locally, I've been living here with my husband for close to a decade. He works in the shipyard and I've been lucky to work remotely that time as well. Most of it out of a great local business called Spark Commons about a block away. And just a quick aside, I think this is a great example of a local Bremerton startup that is now fulfilling a big need. People are working remotely more often. So working from here, I've also been volunteering from here. Back in 2019, I was selected by Mayor Wheeler and approved by the council to serve on the Bremerton Planning Commission. So it's been a privilege to work alongside the very talented city staff, hear from experts and members of the public on how to plan for our city's future, interface with the council on that level. I've also been volunteering with the Kitsap Historical Society for a number of years. I served as president previously and currently I'm vice president and volunteer as director for the museum right over on Fourth Street. So I manage the day-to-day operations, the business side, staff. And through the museum, I represented the Chamber of Commerce meetings, the downtown Bremerton Association and the Bremerton Advisory Council. So I have experience running a small local business and interacting with the city and really planning for Bremerton's business success. And finally, just say I've been attending council meetings for years and speaking out, so I've been involved. I think I'm deeply embedded in this community. I'm raising my son here and I really care deeply about its future. You know, I want to see our city grow, but in a responsible way that doesn't leave people behind. I want to see people have neighborhoods that are vibrant public spaces by visiting infrastructure. And I really just want to see our city embrace tourism and small local business. And I think that could be a win-win for just absolutely everybody in the community. But ultimately, I just wanted to represent everybody in this district, get all the voices heard, the best ideas at the table. I think if we do that, we can make the best decisions for our city going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Our next candidate is Melissa Watkins.
Good morning. Thank you to the Bremerton Chamber of Commerce for allowing us to be back here again. I am a citizen of the Chippewa Nation and I also descend from the Choctaw Nation of Oklahoma. I am a lifelong Washingtonian. I grew up along the shores of the Pigeon Sound and I had family who enrolled in Uppers Gadget. And it's important to me culturally and professionally to just let you know where I come from and who I am. I have been in the area for, as I said, my whole life. And I have recently been to, living in Bremerton and have really quickly developed a community here. And I'm very fortunate to call Bremerton my home with my wife and our two dogs. I, a lot of people ask, you know, what really brought you to wanting to run for a city council? And I have always been somebody who has known I wanted to do public service. I'm very service-forward and community-forward. And throughout my graduate degree, I received a master's in policy studies. I had a professor tell me that because I'm a native woman, I would never get elected to any public position. And that's pretty harsh to hear. And I thought, well, if he knew I was gay, that probably would have made him not even, not even tell me, you know? So, so I have him to say, to kind of say, I can do what I put my heart to and what I get the community support to do. In November of 2020, Deb Holland was appointed as the first native person to be secretary of the Department of Interior. And before that, she was elected to be one of two first native women to be elected to US Congress. That was the first time I've ever been able to see a native woman in an elected position. And I really am encouraged and empowered by the opportunities that other people and leaders have put forward that I can be here today. So I'm inspired by her. And I immediately said, when she was appointed, I made the decision that I was going to run for this position when it opened. And then Kevin, or the incumbent, said that he was no longer running. And so I'm really fortunate to be here and running for this race. I have spent a lot of time really engaging with the community and listening to what their concerns are. On top of my professional experience, leading an equity and environmental justice for over a decade, I have done a lot of community engagement, including doing America Revista and working within local and state governments. And some of the things that I've heard that are most concerning for our citizens is affordable housing. And that comes in many different facets, right? We have homelessness. We have people who are becoming displaced because of different kinds of redevelopment. There's a, there's a wealth gap and income gap between those who own homes and those who rent in Bremerton, even though the costs are about the same. And I look forward to earning your vote. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Melissa. Next, we're going to turn to Michael Goodnow.
Good morning. I want to thank everybody.
Hold on, Michael, one moment. We can see you, we just can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
We have feedback.
How's this?
Good to go. Try it now, Michael.
How does this sound? Can you hear me?
We cannot. So I'm going to have Jeff work on that for a moment. We'll come back to you, Michael. We're going to move to three minutes with Anna Mokler.
Hi, I'm Anna Mokler. I'm running for District Six. I'm running to represent a hard-working district. Here's something about me. I was an insulation contractor and a factory worker, sandblasting IC chips down to desired tolerance. I was a union printer. I was a wetland scientist, most recently with King County Department of Development and Environmental Services. And then I was an adjunct at City University, teaching writing and critical thinking. So basically, really the takeaway here is I'm a geek. I'm interested in precision. I'm interested in specificity. And at this point, I'm really interested in being of use to the people of District Six. When I say I'm a geek, here's how much of a geek I am. I read the 2018 pavement analysis report. I'm sorry. The issues that I'm running for and issues that the many, many hundreds of people in District Six have told me are important to them are good government, transparent, responsive, representative, safe streets, basically the rule of the sea. You yield to the weaker vessel. Strong communities where neighbors can look out for each other with respect. Affordable housing, because housing is a human right. Living wage jobs, you know, basically one job should be enough to live on. A sustainable city that is self-sufficient and green. And the foundation of all of these, which is respect for human rights and human dignity. And the city council isn't going to make our lives perfect, but it can make our lives better. I'm going to improve our quality of life with common sense plans. I have been endorsed, my nonpartisan endorsements are from Representative Derek Kilmer, State Senator Emily Randall, the Kitsap Builders Association, the United Food and Commercial Workers, the Firefighters IA double F Local 437. I think that the people of District Six would be best served by someone who is calm, common sense, loves to keep enormous documents. And the warning sign having gone up, I will just say I'm ready for your questions. Thank you all.
Thank you, Anna. We'll go to Eric and circle back to Michael.
Thank you. My name's Eric Younger. I am the current District Seven City Council member. I first got on the city council in 2001 to fill an unexpired term of David Barr. He left the council district and the council appointed me at the time to fill this term. In the fall of 2001, I ran and successfully won the balance of the two-year term. In 2003, my son was born and I decided to concentrate on the family. Therefore, I did not run again until 2012, I got the ditch again. And then I'm councillor since. My background, my real job, if you will, additionally, council, is for the past approximately 30 years, I've worked for the Department of Justice. I currently do the Division Chief of Financial Investigations for the agency that I've worked for. As far as being on the city council, the exception of this year, the prior five years, I was served as city council president, selected by my fellow council members to serve that position. I believe it's because I'm a consensus builder. I like trying to reach consensus, put differences aside and just move things forward. My educational background, I have a bachelor's degree in history, a master's degree in business administration, and I'm also a certified public accountant. As you can imagine, I'm focused on budgetary issues and I have been all my career, make sure our money is spent wisely in the city. Another thing that I've been vocal for throughout my tenure on council is street and sidewalk improvements. I've actually done quite a few things for that, including writing ordinances that devoted money specifically to the streets without raising your taxes. For example, the stormwater utility tax and the excess revenue from the Red Flex cameras are devoted entirely to street sidewalk improvements. And I'm real proud of District Seven. You can see all the improvements that have happened, especially in the last two years for our street sidewalk improvements, including sidewalk. Hearing from council of District Seven residents and answering their questions and concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. And now we're going to try something with our tech. And we're going to attempt to have Michael Goodnow in just five seconds. Go ahead, Mike.
All right. Can you hear me okay? Are you guys able to hear me?
We can.
Okay. Well, thank you to the chamber and everyone for putting this together. Greetings from Leavenworth, Washington. I'm at a conference of the Washington State Main Street Directors. That's what I do for a living. I help revitalize towns, their downtowns. And, and I wish I could be with you guys this morning, but it is really gorgeous out here right now. Almost was going to turn around and show you out the window. It's been a real honor to serve on city council for these last four years. I've learned so much about how our city works and the amazing people that just make everything happen behind the scenes. I'm really proud of our record, my record, of what we've been able to accomplish. I think the city is definitely moving in the right direction. And I think we just have to, you know, continue to dial in growth. We need to find ways to keep things in balance and, and not, you know, not create a growth situation that increases an affordable housing issue. I've, for the folks who may not know who I am, I was in the Navy. That's what brought me to Kitsap County and I retired in 2002. And I've just, I've just loved it here. I've loved the city of Bremerton and the Northwest in general. And I started my education journey at Olympic College, went on to get a bachelor's in workforce education and a master's in organizational leadership in the community. I've served on many nonprofits and it was actually that amount of community service that I did that led me to run for city council because it seemed like a logical next, next step to, to, in kind of public service. I'm currently the vice president of the Roxy Foundation. So we're, you know, we're actually about to purchase the building and make sure that's a community asset for Bremerton for the next, you know, 80 years. It just celebrated its 80th birthday. And also I've been the chairperson for, for many years of the Kitsap Pride Network that produces the Summer Festival. I am currently also serve on or chair the Finance Committee, chair the Lodging Tax Committee. I've served on the CDBG and it's just, it's been a real honor to be able to participate in, you know, all the inner workings of the city and help address where needs are and making sure those needs are met. It's been, it's been great to be able to get community input and, you know, help make those decisions for the whole city based on what the community needs. I am at a loss for time here. Can I get a, how are we doing?
I think you got about 20 seconds.
20 seconds. The last thing I actually will say is, you know, like I said, it's been, it's been a real pleasure. I would appreciate anyone's support from my district in letting me continue to do the work I've done. And because I'm at a conference, I need to get back into the conference session. This, we had a break from 10 to 10:30. But I look forward to seeing you all when I'm back in Bremerton later today. So thank you and have a great day.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, so since we started on this end with Jeff, the first question starts with Eric. Eric, what are your proudest accomplishments?
Proudest accomplishments? Oh, now it got really loud. That's great. There's quite a few. One, can we elaborate on the question, Proudest accomplishments on this?
Feel free to take it as you will.
Just in life.
We have one minute.
Oh, one minute. Let me, let me focus on my proudest accomplishments, marrying my wife and the birth of my child. So, I mean, that's obvious. But as far as city council, and now I got like 30 seconds left. Again, serving as council president for the last five years.
Clock has stopped. Yes?
Yeah. No worries. We'll, it's all, it's all good. So I'm going to take the rest of the question to, as far as city council goes, that's what you're here for. And I feel I've been a very productive council member. The only one I can think of that in comparison is Cecil McConnell wrote a lot of ordinances on his own. I think I've probably written eight. I've been the author of ordinances of, which is probably right up there with Cecil, not surpass him. What I'm getting at is, I'm a person of action. I hear a problem and I come up with a solution. I run it by the rest of the council for one body, but I come up with these ideas and I move them forward. So I'm very proud of being that type of council member, instead of just relying on administration, yes or no. Actually taking that approach and coming up, coming up with solutions and getting consensus. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Anna, same question. What are your proudest accomplishments?
Well, my proudest accomplishment is the publication in 2016 of The Rat Hunt Boys, The Black Comedy of Revolution and Dystopia. My second proudest accomplishment would be teaching critical thinking at City University. Over the years, just watching students really learn how to weigh and assess evidence and really enjoy it and to begin taking power over their lives and the flood of information that comes out of all of us. As far as city council goes, it's real bread and butter. Getting the playground, the hazardous playground that Lulu hadn't fixed, so that it's no longer a hazard to little kids that play on it. And there's new basketball nets.
Thank you, Anna. Melissa, same question. What are your proudest accomplishments?
My proudest accomplishment is buying a home with my wife. I honestly never thought that that would be an opportunity that I would have, both to marry a woman and to buy a home. So the fact that I was able to do that here in Bremerton and make Bremerton our home and the community that we have here is truly the greatest accomplishment. And I really want to make barriers a little bit less tall for people, so that they can also have the, the opportunity to follow their dreams. My second proudest moment is knowing that I'm making a difference for my nieces. My twin sister has twins and they're eight. And the fact that they, that I can do something that changes their future is really something that I live for. So thanks.
Thank you, Melissa. And Jeff, same question. What are your proudest accomplishments?
I'll follow suit with Melissa and Eric and say, I think the proudest is my husband and I adopting our son Max, who just turned 10 months old. So that's been the experience of a lifetime for sure. Locally, I'm really proud of the work I've done with the museum. I think notable is the past, gosh, year-plus now. Got a bunch of people together and long story short, pitched a museum reorganization where we reorganized the structure of our board and the structure of the employees with a much long-term focus to make the museum sustainable economically and be able to reach a broader audience in the community. So I'm proud of that, that we now have two full-time employees with a living wage and a good salary to allow them to be able to generate museum content, to be able to reach out to communities, especially historically unrepresented groups, to serve as a platform to honor and highlight them. And we'll be doing more marketing and expanding to a broader audience in Bremerton. So proud of that. And then campaign-wise, just I've hit over 2,000 doors now. So I'm really proud of all the steps I've got in and being able to talk to so many people in this excellent community.
Thank you, Jeff. Our next question, being this is a Chamber of Commerce, and we'll start this question with Jeff. How do you define economic development and what is your plan for economic development in Bremerton?
Good question. I would define economic development as, you know, generating extra revenue in the city that benefits everybody. So that means small local businesses that are having more sales, getting more people in the door. That means more places for local residents to be able to visit and shop at, to get goods locally, to have local places to go. And then finally, all that economic activity generates tax dollars that we can decide what to do with. And I like to say you can be, you can be good or evil with it, but you can have a growing city with new tax dollars and use that for good. Use that to invest in infrastructure neighborhoods, to help out people, not be left behind with things like rental assistance, home buying programs. And so what I would do is to have the city embrace and, you know, directly fund organizations like, like the Chamber and the DVA, the MBA, and really embrace tourism, get a plan together for Bremerton to make us kind of like other successful towns like Palbo, that really draws people here and has a comprehensive guide of where to go, what to do in Bremerton for the day, to get people visiting the town more often.
Thank you, Jeff. Melissa, same question. How do you define economic development? And what is your plan for economic development in Bremerton?
Thank you. Yeah, I define economic development as the opportunity to increase our economy. And what that looks like, what I believe it should look like here in Bremerton is that money is earned here and then it's spent here. And so I think a lot of that means that we're supporting the small businesses in our community. We are creating opportunities for more businesses to open their doors in Bremerton. We have a lot of empty and vacant spaces, especially downtown. We need to be working within city government and with the landlords and realtors to define and determine how we can best create opportunities for those businesses to open up the spaces that we have. And I would also want to make sure that we're doing things in a more equitable way. So I think that looks like making sure that the opportunities and the taxes that we have and within the city are looked at and within the city are looked at progressively and equitably. Thanks.
Thanks, Melissa. Anna, same question. How do you define economic development and what is your plan for economic development in Bremerton?
Thank you. Well, I've knocked on, oh, I don't know, over fourteen hundred doors this time around. And many, many people who live in Bremerton and vote in Bremerton are very interested in having vibrant shopping districts. They like what's happening with downtown. And when I mentioned that the Calo Avenue area, because nobody knows Charleston area. When I say that that strip is being considered seriously for real redevelopment, they get very excited. Wow, a coffee shop, that would be wonderful, where you could like actually perhaps buy a stapler or a ream of paper. Which brings me to the second point, which is that there's very little actual business support here in Bremerton. If you need a paperclip, I do not know where you can buy one. Well, okay, paperclips, Walgreens, but anything more than that, ink cartridge refill, you would have to go all the way up to Silverdale. And then third, these, these shopping districts are designed to be, in congruence with the comprehensive plan, pedestrian-friendly. And everybody in Bremerton would like to be a tourist in such a pedestrian-friendly, vibrant shopping district. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Eric, same question. How do you define economic development and what is your plan for economic development in Bremerton?
Sure, real quick, economic development policies and procedures in place that encourage and do not hinder both new business and help expand current businesses. As far as plan, first, what I have done while I'm on city council is that when I first returned in two thousand and twelve, the council enacted an ordinance that took the BNO tax exemption from sixty thousand and increased it twenty thousand dollars a year to now to the point where up to two hundred and forty thousand dollars in grocery receipts are excluded from BNO tax. We're gonna keep that course as far as I'm concerned, as long as I'm on council. The other thing is really is where are our opportunities for reuse of vacant buildings? And again, the council's addressing that as soon as tomorrow. We're gonna talk about the Calo District Center and making zoning code amendments to make those buildings more conducive or reuse.
Thank you, Eric. Next question. We'll start again with Eric Younger. If a kind-hearted donor gave the city a one hundred million dollar windfall to use however you desire to improve our town, how would you spend the funds?
Wow, hundred million dollars. That's a good question. So, a hundred million dollars to me, that implies capital improvements throughout the city. We have failing infrastructure in our, in our roads and sidewalks. So, that'd be one that I would definitely want to address. We need about six million dollars a year in, for local street sidewalk improvements. So, we could make a big down payment on getting caught up in that aspect. I would also want to devote some of that money for other type of capital improvements. One thing I can think in mind is, we have a, a plan for a regional soccer center which would help attract more businesses. And specifically, I'm thinking about the hotels. We have hotels downtown here that have benefited tremendously from the conference center. But the ones on the outer part of the city, not much, not so much. And the regional soccer center would help them quite a bit. Out of time.
Thank you, Eric. Anna, same question. If a kind-hearted donor gave the city a one hundred million windfall to use however you desire to improve our town, how would you spend the funds?
I would buy the planetarium and I would make it part of the city. But after I had expended a few million dollars on that. I agree with Counselor Younger. I would just like have chip ceiling descend from the sky to cover every street in Bremerton, to paint every center line, to paint every lane, to paint every crosswalk. Yes, and have all the stop signs, have the little lights around them that everyone likes, like the ones near the Bremerton High School. Just to really make the streets of Bremerton safe for everybody who uses them. And then I would spend the remainder on a community center for West Bremerton, which has none. East Bremerton has Lebo, it has the Boys and Girls, it has the Y. But West Bremerton has no place for children and teens to gather during the many, many rainy months.
Thanks, Anna. Melissa, same question.
Excellent, thank you. So, first I would take an opportunity to really meet with community and learn what their priorities are for how we spend the money that the city has. We have an opportunity such as that to do that right now with the ARPA funding that the city has received, a million dollars, which there has not been any community engagement and I've been attempting to hear from people how they would prefer to have that money spent. While doorbelling, a lot of folks really come down to three issues. I didn't get to finish the last two and the, and the first one, which is infrastructure and the environment. So, for housing, how about we implement some more mental health and human services? I would like to, you know, see how the Pendleton Place works out and potentially provide more opportunities for housing in that way. Let's fix our, our streets and put on bike lanes. Let's create an environment plan, put a lot of trees up just for the climate and the environment and develop an entrepreneurship program to support specifically bike park business owners.
Thank you, Melissa. Jeff, same question.
So, similarly, yeah, I think setting aside a, a good chunk, having a public input process would be great. Originally got to serve on that Community Development Block Brand Review Committee that distributed HUD funds to projects in the city. And a lot of that was, you know, fixing streets and sidewalks if you desperately need to do. Including accessible playgrounds, another great project to help out people in our community. I invest in honestly some more parking downtown. That's been a big chokehold talking to small local businesses and a big hindrance to getting downtown fully vibrant. It's been on arts on the city to make it a vibrant welcome-in-place, a community people want to live in. I would, you know, spend some of it to start a committee to look at a public hospital district to address the, you know, the monopoly that we have in local healthcare for CHI. And ultimately, yeah, for, for helping those in need, one of the best ideas I've heard is to establish a navigator center in the city for people who need city services, everything for people experiencing homelessness, people who need help with college applications. Kind of a one-stop shop for public services so people don't have to visit a hodgepodge of places around the city to get the help they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Next question. Outside of COVID nineteen-related items, what do you see as the most pressing needs for our city? Start with Jeff.
Well, let's see, pressing needs, I would go back to the people I've talked to, the nearly three thousand people outdoors that I visited. One of the, the top ones that we get a lot of the affordable housing and growth. So, we need to make sure that we keep growing as a city. We don't want to be a dying city, but again, we do that in a way that's responsible. We can have new development that isn't cookie cutter. We can zone things properly so that you have small local business space, you have walkability and bikeability, investing in public transit and just general affordable housing, not million-dollar condos, but, but places that people here can afford. There's also been a growing need to address, you know, rising homelessness. And I said, I think bolstering the city navigator program and looking at a navigator center is a great way to address that. And finally, again, this goes back to the vibrancy of the city as a whole, small local business. We need to invest in our city of being a place that people want to come and visit, spend tax dollars and help out the businesses here to grow and be a part of our community.
Thank you, Jeff. Melissa?
Can you repeat the question?
I can. Outside of COVID nineteen-related items, what do you see as the most pressing needs for our city?
Yeah, so we are expected as a region to be doubling in our population and live in the next twenty years. And so, that's exciting in terms of having the increase in economic opportunity and diversity in our, in our city. And it's also a need for being proactive and planning for that type of growth. So, for me, it's really making sure that we are providing the opportunities to be sustainable in, in that growth, both economically but also environmentally. So, how about we're making sure that we are planning for fifty-plus years out instead of planning for the next ten or, ten or twenty years, which means that we're gonna have infrastructure that is more sustainable, we're gonna have housing that's more sustainable for all families that want to live here. And with that development and, and growth, needing to make sure that we're supporting tourism opportunities as well as our transportation and not over prior looking at Bremerton, but also partnering with our regional, regional entities so that we're making sure that we have all the opportunities here that we can get.
Thank you, Melissa. Anna?
Outside of COVID nineteen, I would actually say that the most important threat is the least visible, which is the climate crisis. Wildfires, the hundred and eleven degrees here in Bremerton last June. The hurricanes that have been happening, the intensity and the frequency of natural disasters is increasing, has increased and will increase yet further. So, I would like to have an ecologist with some specialization in forestry as a permanent employee of the city of Bremerton to look at every proposal through the environmental lens so that we're not building on overly steep slopes, so that we're preserving our large trees so that we're rewarding developments that plant native trees just to be prepared for the future that is already here. And I have more things, but I have a red screen, so I can't tell you.
Thank you, Anna. Eric?
Okay, pressing needs outside of COVID nineteen, affordable housing, addressing homelessness. I do believe the city has, has done an adequate job in affecting homelessness. We do have Pendleton Place coming online and we'll see how that works out. Affordable housing is one that's always difficult and the government cannot solve everything for affordable housing. We can put policies and we are putting policies in place to help address that, but really market forces need to take care of that through supply chain issues, of course, and then that's COVID related. One thing also is expand broadband and the city can have a direct impact in that, in that our cable contracts are coming due. And the reason for expanding broadband is to encourage fiber optic being spread throughout cities. We have increased bandwidth and you have people that work in Seattle that live here for the cost of living differences and they'd be perhaps more conducive to actually staying here, have the broadband capability to start their own businesses or move their businesses here.
Thank you, Eric. We'll start the next question with you and you brieved on it. Somebody writes, I'm concerned about the plans for supporting our infrastructure in the face of growth, roads, traffic, and special availability of healthcare and homes. Growth is inevitable, planning is important. In parts of our city, businesses are being affected by homelessness. What is your plan to address homelessness?
The plan again is to continue the course on homelessness. We have Pendleton Place coming online. That is in District Seven. I was not a vocal appointee to Pendleton Place. In fact, I helped community meetings so that the community, especially residents of District Seven, could hear from Kitsap Mental Health what their plans were and to help allay the fears behind that, that facility. Affordable housing is extremely difficult question and really not something you can answer in a minute. It really isn't. And, and the reason is because there's all kinds of various reasons for homelessness and there's all kinds of solutions. Really, some primary drivers, of course, are mental health issues, drug use. But there's also people that are displaced because they lost jobs, because the economy, and the solutions for that are varied. I'm proud of what the city has done with expanding the Navigator Program. I'm proud of Pendleton Place. We're taking the right steps and, and I'm out of time now.
Thank you, Eric. Anna, same question.
There were a lot of moving parts to that question. Could you repeat the actual question just right there at the end, please?
In parts of our city, businesses are being affected by homelessness. What are your plans to address homelessness?
Homelessness, okay. First, Pendleton Place, the seventy-two units of supportive housing to which Counselor Younger has referred a couple of times. Everybody's quite happy about that. It's actually gonna have Kitsap Mental Health will be there, KCR will be there. I understand that there'll be job training and rehab opportunities. This is a way for people to break the cycle of homelessness and to move forward. Which brings us to part two, the missing middle of Bremerton housing. Lodging houses, studios, mother-in-laws, otherwise known as accessory dwelling units. All of those small, just-a-roof places for people who are starting out or who are restarting. We need to incentivize those by, through an adaptation of the multifamily tax exemption. There, I am a geek. To make sure that the multifamily tax exemption reflects the Bremerton and median income of around forty-five to forty-seven K and not the county-wide. Oh, red screen bug.
Thank you, Anna. Melissa, same question.
Sure, I mean, I look forward to the opportunity to serve on council and, and bring together different minds and different experiences because I've not been to repeat everything that's just been said, although I do agree with many of it. So, one of the things I've heard more recently is a concern by the Bremerton firefighters in that they are now getting majority of the calls as first responders to non-criminal incidences. And many of these calls are related to people who are experiencing homelessness, are having some kind of drug challenge or mental health crisis. But the firefighters are not provided with the training or the resources, AKA money and capacity to support them in the increased demand that they have as a result of the state legislation. And so, allocating and figuring out how we can redistribute those resources and opportunities to those first responders will be key. And I also think we, you know, I'm hearing from our neighbors that we need to find opportunities to but get, get more streetlights, get places where, where people and communities can be safe and where we can find opportunities to increasing support for Pendleton Place for housing. Thanks.
Thank you, Melissa. Jeff?
I think it's important to acknowledge there, you know, are many, many causes we're talking up here that lead people to experience homelessness. I'll never forget knocking on doors. I talked to a, a woman who had been kicked out by her ex-husband with her two kids and experienced homelessness for a couple of weeks before finding stable housing. I talked to somebody who went through drug addiction herself and is now a, a drug counselor, a social worker that works with people with, with mental illnesses. And I've reached out to kind of experts. I've talked to the United Way Director on a lot of the programs that they run to help people in our community. I got to meet with the Bremerton Housing Authority Director the other day about, about establishing new affordable housing. I sat down with our new police chief and existing fire chief. And then, you know, numerous business owners who are impacted by this issue. And, and even at the museum, I, I dealt with it firsthand. And so I, you know, I value this rich nation on earth. We should have the resources to give people proper housing, medical care, food. And I think what we need to focus on are services that are proactive, not reactive. Coordinating all the wonderful organizations we have in the city, like in by the Navigator Program, hopefully getting a Navigator Center. Because I just don't think, you know, people living in, in tents and on sidewalks is, is not something that we should accept as a long-term solution. I know that we can do better as a city than that. And so I think it's again, bringing everyone to the table and finding solutions that'll work.
Thank you, Jeff. We'll start the next questions with you. What do you think is the role of a city council member and what should its relationship be with the mayor and the administration?
I think the, the primary role of the city council member is to be representative for their district. It's about representing every single person in your district, about being available, talking with them, hearing their concerns, letting them know what's coming up for a vote, what's on the table ahead of time. There's a construction project on their, you know, happening on their street. Go in and knock it on the door and make sure that they're aware of it and they know how to give input. And getting all that feedback proactively ahead of time so that people aren't surprised in the end, that they have a say in how their city runs. For interacting with, with, with the mayor, it's simply that as well. We should be, be talking constantly about what our top priorities are. We should be, again, proactive, not reactive, laying out our agenda for council, finding the things that, that we agree on of which at least up here, there are, are many, many things we agree on that we could get done. So, laying out the agenda ahead of time, working with the mayor to make sure we get that passed and not reacting to situations as they pop up before us. That's, that's what I would do on council.
Thank you, Jeff. Melissa?
Thank you. Yeah, I think this, the primary roles of city council member are to support the budget and policies that affect our community. And for me, that means making sure that you are building trust within community members and having an opportunity not just to be vocal as a city council representative, but also to be listening as a, as a council member representative and making sure that you are bringing all of the voices to that table. And I also think it's Uh, and I also think it's important to be using their experience and qualifications to be able to make policy. Um, that does reflect and inform, uh, our community, community needs. Uh, it's really critical that we have strong relationships within the administration, within other city, with across the city councils, so with other city council members. And with the mayor, uh, because we've seen how things can't get done if that's not there. So I think the, making sure that we're building relationships and trust. Um, and being informed, so making sure that we are, um, getting information from those who, uh, have different kinds of expertise. Um, coming to the table to, um, inform us and then making the decisions that we think is right for our community.
Thank you, Melissa. Anna?
Thank you. So what should a city councillor's, what is a city councillor's job? Well, to represent the district, to be an advocate for the district, to be actually accessible to the district. To hold monthly meetings and furthermore to go out into the district as often as possible. Um, just having your email posted somewhere and checking it when you can. That's not enough. We really have to represent the people of the district and then to actually be an advocate for them. But to do so courteously without disrespecting staff, without disrespecting other councillors. Um, without representing the mayor. And a useful analogy for this is the council is the legislative branch. And the mayor is the executive branch. So. There is a way for us to work together and though it does not seem to be working at federal level, we can make it work right here in Bremerton. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Eric?
Okay, this kind of softball question, because it's been on for a while. Much of it's already been spoken about. The, uh, role of council is setting policy and number one policy is our city's budget. They also obviously represent the district, but I would also argue need to represent and balance that with the needs of the entire city. Remember on the council, you're one of seven council members. And so we need to, uh, obviously, and I'm sure everyone here would agree. That we need to consider what is the city's best interest and along with your constituents and districts, in whatever district you're in. And the other thing is just keep in mind that technically. The mayor is supposed to carry out the council's policies and directives. We all know that that doesn't necessarily happen that way. That's not necessarily reflective of reality and I'm not talking about the current mayor. I've actually worked with four different mayors since I have experience in this. Um, but theoretically, uh, there should be checks and balances in place and the city council member needs to be willing to be outspoken and, and. Call out things when they're not right.
Thank you, Eric. We'll start the next question with, uh, you. How long have you li- currently lived in Bremerton and why did you move here initially?
Okay, so I moved here nineteen ninety-seven. If I did the math right, that's twenty-four years. Okay, good. Start there. Uh, the reason why I moved here is, uh, I was intrigued, uh. Coming from, uh, moved from Detroit from, for work. And I was intrigued by the Cal sort plan. I don't know if that brings a belt to anybody. And that had to do with the fast ferries and the redevelopment of downtown. And I thought Bremerton was an outstanding economic opportunity. And it was. It took a while to happen. I bought a waterfront home in nineteen ninety-seven for a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. That was a bargain. No one wanted to move here. And I saw what the prices were in Seattle and that's where my job was. And I said, you know what? Bremerton's got promise. Um, I was right. Bremerton does have promise and Bremerton's doing great, but those first ten, fifteen, twenty years. Growth was slow, uh, but now, in my opinion, we're, we're really booming. So, um, that's why.
Thank you. Anna, same question. How long have you currently lived in Bremerton and why did you move here initially?
I have lived on Cambrian Avenue since almost four and a half years. Um, I lived in Seattle for many, many years. My mother got sick. I went back to New York State. When I became free again, I came back to Seattle, but it was not the Seattle I had come from. The Seattle I had come from, people fied with each other for how long they had been able to keep a car on the road. They made their own things. They were handy. Um, they were interested in art and expression and conversation. So it had become quite a different Seattle. So I started looking around and I found Bremerton and I just really fell for it. So that is why I am here.
Yeah. Thanks, Anna. Melissa, same question.
Thank you. As I said before, I'm a lifelong Washingtonian and I ended up graduating high school in Puyallup. And the first place I knew I wanted to go was wherever the urban area was. So I moved to Seattle. Um, because as a, uh, young queer person, that was the only place that I knew was safe and I would have opportunities to be. And once I had an op- realized that we have become a more welcoming society and, um, my community began to grow, I. Uh, had many friends that had, that had been moving out here for several years. And to Bremerton, that is in District Three. And so my wife and I decided, we're married at the time. Um, that we wanted to find where we would have our permanent home and we made Bremerton our permanent home a few years ago. And we're really happy to be here. It is, um, uh, for us a safe and welcoming place and I hope to continue to, um, keep it that way. Thanks.
Thanks, Melissa. Jeff?
So yeah, I think the, the short answer is like a lot of people, the shipyard brought me up here and I secured his route. Um, I guess I grew up in Arizona, a lot of different places. I spent four years in Atlanta, Georgia. Uh, five and a half years in Southern New Mexico, um, a year in California, the Silicon Valley area. And it was, well, I was in California, uh, my husband, uh, was finishing graduating. The, the idea was he would get a job out there and we'd settle out there. And a couple of months being out there, I didn't like it. There, there wasn't a sense of community. Um, nobody really talked to each other. It just wasn't a welcoming place. And so he ended up getting the job off to the shipyard and I kind of said. Uh, Bremerton, well, where's that? All right. So we visited and just instantly fell in love. Um, between the city, the community, you stop to talk, talk to people on the sidewalks. Um, we moved up here and, and don't ever want to leave. Um, and I think another, another question, so we've been up here about eight and a half years now. Um, again, another question is, is why do you want to stay? In addition to that, I just see the, the potential for Bremerton. Um, I think we can make it so that somebody from another state doesn't go, you know, Bremerton, where's that? They go, oh, Bremerton, I've heard of that place. Man, that's, you know. What a, what a great town. Um, so that's, you know, why I want to serve on council. It's what I want to see happen.
Thanks, Jeff. Uh, nice segue into our next question. Uh, I guess it's now thirty-one years ago. In nineteen ninety, Money Magazine named Bremerton as the best place to live. In the entire country. What will you do as a council member to make Bremerton number one on such lists again?
So I think nineteen ninety was right before, uh, Silverdale Mall opened. We lost a lot of our stores downtown. That kind of caused a. Bit of a spiraling depression in the city. Um, I think we got an opportunity before us with the Silverdale Mall dwindling, uh, with malls and dental dwindling. Uh, to recapture a lot of business in the city, um, specifically the small local business that I think Bremerton is known for and can be known for. Um, so again, yeah, let's, uh, uh, let's keep slowly eliminating the BNO tax. Let's make the city customer service friendly to new businesses, being able to start. Um, let's revitalize downtown and get a lot more spaces for small local businesses to start up, providing the proper infrastructure of parking, public transit to get people downtown. And then, once we get that vibrancy going and I've been a place that people want to come visit, again, let's use those tax dollars smartly. Let's reinvest in. Affordable housing, making sure people who live here are left behind. Um, and just programs that foster the great sense of community that I, that I think we have in the city that we can make even greater. Um, and if we do that, yeah, I think we can put Bremerton back on the top of the list again.
Thank you, Jeff. Melissa, same question.
Okay, so how do we make Bremerton best again, I think was the question.
Correct.
Um, I, I think Bremerton is the best place to live. Um, I, that's why I'm here. And I've also heard many of our neighbors really, uh, emphasize that same point, um, when asking what their concerns were and, and then kind of not really knowing what. Um, what, what their concerns were. Um, but of course, that's, that's a small population and there are other people who have a lot more concerns for our city. Um, and I think that just shows that there is a lot of inequity within our communities. I'm a trained professional social scientist. I look at data, um, socioeconomic data pri- primarily. Um, and can really see through that, um, information, the real disparities that occur within our communities. So both by people letting you know. Um, what their experiences are and by what, uh, the data is showing us. Um, and I, I'm going to see if, can I use this?
We'll come back at the end.
Okay, okay. So, um, I will come back at the end.
Thank you. Anna, same question.
Well, I'm going to give you a very Northwestern answer. I don't want to be on the, uh, on the best city and the Money Magazine. Cause that's just going to bring a lot more incomers. Okay. Uh, one thing that I've noticed. Is how widespread, and I'm agreeing with Melissa here, how widespread is the belief that Bremerton is already a pretty darn fine place to live. Um, from people with those half-mile-long driveways off Marine Drive. You know, with a water view and, and you would expect that they would say, everything's pretty great here. But I'm also hearing it from people in pretty battered fourplexes that are on, off, up off gravel roads. They're like. I like Bremerton. I think we're going in the right direction. I have no complaints. And everything in between. So I guess I'm more concerned with the people of Bremerton thinking it's the best place than with whatever Money Magazine has a. An opinion about.
Thank you, Anna. Eric?
Okay, well, first admission, I used to read Money Magazine when it was in print. Maybe it still is. Who reads magazines anymore than print versions? Um, and I see very calm that, uh, when you come up with statistics like that, I'm not sure that the writer actually visited Bremerton. They're looking at statistics, for example, looking at crime rates, uh, proximity to, uh, major employment, uh, hospitals, education, resources, et cetera. I agree. I think Bremerton's on the right track. Yes, it is. I think we're doing great. If you look at our permanent activity, the city is booming. And, uh, part of that is really that we're benefiting from the general effects of the economy, even in the COVID environment. Of the greater fugitive sound region. And Bremerton's a very attractive area for capital compared to, for example, Seattle. So I think we're on the right path. We need to keep up with the business and family environment as far as policies, you know, tax exemption being one of them. I also think we probably use the little improvement in outreach and I'm gonna lend out my hand to the Chamber of Commerce. I'm back on. As if I make it back as council president, I'd like to do some outreach and meet with the Chamber of Commerce on the way through this.
I think I know somebody who can help with that, Eric. Thank you. Um, so I have two challenges, so I'd like to pass that back to Melissa. Melissa gets the challenge. And then Jeff has a challenge after that. One more minute.
It's less of a challenge and more additional time.
Yep.
Um, so I'm going to kind of take the last two questions and expand on, on what I've said. Um, I grew up harvesting shellfish and crab and plants and salmon. And you can not do that if you're living in Seattle or really King County. And I had always been coming out to the Kitsap County area to be, to be harvesting shellfish and, and also bringing all of my family and friends out here. Um, so that we can enjoy the beautiful areas that we have in our county. Um, in Bremerton, you can't do that because we have a lot of challenges with, um, our sewage and stormwater, uh, reaching in our waters. And so I really want to be able to make sure that we're thinking about how, um, how are we making sure our parks and our shorelines? And those aspects that people really love about our community maintain, um, healthy. How do we get them back to being healthy? And also how can we use, um, tourism to also improve the small businesses that we have in our area? Um, and someone had recommended a four-ack walk. And so that's something that I would like to consider as well. Thanks.
Thanks, Melissa. Jeff, one additional minute as well.
Yeah, I'll call up the yes and card. Uh, and so yeah, I think it's great to talk to so many people who love, love living here like we all do. Um, but you know, there are things that really do need to be improved. In addition to the, you know, slowly getting back there on the, on the economic and small business level. Uh, the loss of healthcare has been a big one. I've heard from people recently too. Um, I ran into a, a nurse who drives patients to appointments and now instead of driving three minutes away, they have to go twenty minutes to Silverdale or Port Orchard. Um, talking to both the police and fire chief the other week, um, you know, their service calls that they have to go to the, go to the hospital. It adds an extra twenty minutes and that stretches then all of our emergency services resources, um, in an already growing population. And I've talked to, gosh, some people who, you know, retired here specifically, um, especially over, you know, downtown in the Minette area to be close to health services. And now they're, they're all going to Silverdale. So I spent the past couple of council meetings after talking with kind of local leaders, speaking up about solutions on this. Um, one, the, the council met to hear about the certificate of need process. It's kind of like taxi medallions for hospitals. It's one good avenue. Um, establishing a public hospital district of which half of all hospitals in Washington's are these things. Um, and generally just reaching out to other councils and finding opportunities to draw on new, new providers, we can make some change.
Thank you, Jeff. If you pass that back, it's still, uh, Eric's turn to lead. Uh, Eric? We have a couple more questions here before we move on. Uh, the past, it's been over eighteen months now. That we've been in a pandemic that has been absolutely devastating to local business. What do you believe that the city of Bremerton could have done better to support local businesses during the pandemic? And you know what? I might add to that. What can the city also continue to do if you don't want to answer a past question?
Yeah, the, the first thing I'd like to know is I'd like to hear from businesses of where the city went wrong and how we could improve. I'd like to hear from you. We, uh, received a couple of tranches, if you will, of federal government money. And we, uh, broadcast the availability of that money using, going through KETA, seeing money was available. And then we processed applications and last I heard, we still have money left over from COVID. Uh, relief funds. So please reach out to us, reach out to the administration and tell us where, what we did wrong. Um, we, uh, relaxed the parking downtown. Um, I, I don't know who the author of the question is, but tell me what more I'm, we're supposed to do in a COVID, in the pandemic, uh, at a local level. I think we've been very encouraging to local business and, uh, please tell me where we have.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Anna?
So I've been following council since twenty eighteen and blogging about it since twenty twenty. And I do not see what more council could have done. And in fact, I thought that council and the mayor together. Um, already had in place before March twenty twenty mechanisms what, by, uh, whereby the money that came in for the COVID relief funds. Could be quickly and efficiently and responsibly distributed to the, those people who needed it. Um. Really, a, a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic comes along, once-in-a-lifetime, let us hope. But I think that we did well and I think I've, I'm seeing new businesses coming up on Calo Avenue. I'm seeing a lot of existing businesses actually doing better. Repair, anything that's repairing stuff is doing much better. And I am not in as good a position as Counselor Younger to know, but yeah, absolutely. If there's a. If there's a problem, approach council because they are responsive.
Thank you, Anna. Melissa?
So the city has made, uh, more money, um, within the pandemic than they had prior. Uh, as a result of people having increased their shopping habits online and through Amazon. And while that's been really beneficial for the income for the city, um, it also has had an impact that is continuing within local businesses. And so I think. Um, there are two aspects to this. One is, uh, can the city create a campaign that supports our community members to buy local? Uh, and another is how to support small businesses who are more heavily impacted, um, as a result of the, the pandemic, such as having. Lost and spent all of their savings that they had. Um, and will continue to potentially be impacted by, um, the growth that's happening within our city. How can we pri- how can we prioritize? Um, the resources that are distributed to support them. Um, and I would continue to see how we can provide, uh, more relief for folks. And what does that look like in supporting landlords who have been impacted by that as well?
Thank you, Melissa. Jeff?
I think as somebody who stepped into running a local small nonprofit during the pandemic. Um, for me, the, the thing the city could have really done better is, is really on the communication side. Um, one example I called out the last, I guess, Canada Cafe, College of Issues. Um, was the local lodging tax funds that several organizations here, you know, rely on for a significant chunk of their funding. Um, and the twenty twenty funds were delayed and just distributed a couple of months, two months ago, I think, or they, where they finalized. Um, and there really was no good communication on whether we could still expect those, whether it was being worked on. Um, and so again, I think that could have been expedited. Um, and as well, the communication side, just, just coordination. Um, I know a lot, I talked to a lot of small businesses that didn't know what relief funds that they could apply for or where to go to apply for PPP loan. Uh, stuff of that nature. And so I think the city could have done, maybe hosted some workshops. Um, but resume, gotten some people together, really. um, resumed, gotten some people together, really just use the city's communication system to make sure everybody really knew how to apply for everything and to, to make that equal. Not, not just the big players that knew where to go. And so going forward as well, um, better communication from the city and investing in things like the chamber.
Thank you, Jeff. Well, you want to use it now? Uh, Melissa would like to use her second challenge.
I'm really unsure how, how much time we have left.
You get one more minute.
So uh, yeah, so I, one of the things that I was really inspired by, um, that happened during the pandemic, especially early on with the lockdown, is the way that our community came together. And really, I think that's the one really key thing to having a resilient community is the fact that we can come together and support one another. So things like Bremor Bugs, Figurstube really came together to support the local businesses in the region. I don't know about you, but we purchased several, several of the T-shirts that supported the local businesses in the area, both as kind of like memorabilia, I suppose, for what's been happening, but also in support of our community. And I think that's an example of how our community can come together to continue to support one another. Another thing that um, I've found to be true from people I've spoken with are that seniors were more heavily impacted with, by COVID, um, particularly those who are aging in place. The, the services were discontinued. Um, all, all different kinds from tax, supporting them with um, completing taxes to how to maintain yards. So I think that's another way that we can, we can learn our lessons from the pandemic and come together. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Uh, back to Jeff here. Jeff, we'll start with you. There are regulations in our core downtown, including uh, implementation of fire suppression systems that are barriers to entry for businesses to utilize space, existing space in our downtown core. What can you do as a council member to help alleviate that, to create a more vibrant downtown?
Yeah, that, man, going to, to local businesses, I, I've heard this firsthand of just how expensive it can be to install a bold new, you know, fire suppression system in some of these older buildings we have. Um, I've heard that the inspection times can sometimes take months, um, that it's really onerous and new businesses are trying to get started. Uh, and they're, they're having to wait on permits and inspections before they, before they get going and the startup isn't revenue every month. And so I did, you know, I brought this up when I met with um, Pat McGann, the, the fire chief. Um, and basically, you know, asked him, is there any leeway on this? And you know, it, it can come down to council passing codes and ordinances. It's something that I think we need to really get everyone to the table to discuss because there's, there's pros and cons, right? We, we never want to pass anything that's gonna result in, in a, in a serious fire or, or deaths, um, anything of that nature. Um, but at the same time, requiring, you know, extraordinarily expansive system in some of these older buildings isn't necessarily feasible anyway. So I think if we can find smart ways to ensure that we keep things safe, but manageable and affordable, um, we need to keep these old historic buildings around, the great space. We can renovate them and get them filled with businesses again.
Thank you, Jeff. Melissa, same question.
Yeah, thank you. So I think one of the bigger challenges that we have, not only for the um, fire suppression systems being a barrier, but also the vacancy of our businesses, of our properties, any, anyhow downtown, or um, that we're not really doing anything to keep the property owners accountable um, to our city and to uh, particularly the downtown area and, and other areas of our city that have the vacant spaces. So I think as city council, it would be meaningful and important to really find different ways to collaborate with um, property owners and the businesses and um, the chamber and other uh, different entities to find what those kinds of incentives would be um, most beneficial for actually getting uh, different systems in place, taking uh, down some of those barriers and helping to keep property owners accountable um, so that we can be having a more vital um, uh, community down there.
Thank you, Melissa. Anna, same question.
Can you repeat the question, please?
I can attempt to, since I made it up uh, myself. Our downtown core has ordinance barriers, such as the implementation of a fire suppression system that prohibit uh, our vacant spaces to be used. What can you do on city council to help alleviate this problem?
Well, one thing I can do is urge the adoption of plain language and a fire suppression system is what you see up here in this ceiling, a sprinkler system. Um, the other thing is, I absolutely do not want to go up against the fire department in any way. I have been in a fire. I never want to be in another fire. This is one that's like, you know, I want the foundations of houses to be really solid. I want the fire department to sign off on sprinkler systems. I kind of don't really care what else, you know? I mean, yes, it would encourage business to relax this regulation, but you know, we just can't be having fires in downtown. And I've, a lot of people have brought up, why are there so many vacant buildings downtown? And I've explained that one of the things is the sprinkler system. And this is one thing where the people of Bremerton are unanimous. Yes, let us wait for the fire department to sign off. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Eric?
Okay, so this is something that cannot be changed by the city council. These fire sprinkler requirements required by state law, and I believe they adopted the NFPA, which is the National Organization for Fire Standards. Um, so it's been codified. And so the council cannot overwrite state law. It just can't happen. Um, what happens is if you have a non-conforming use of a building that's no longer in use and you want to bring a business in and after it's sit for a while, you have to bring it up to code. And, and I'm sorry, there's nothing the council can do. I guess you wish for me to say, well, we do this with, I'm sorry, we can't. I'm a, I'll tell you this, I'm a capitalist. I really believe that uh, rising, rising rents and incentives for, for property owners will give them the incentive, go ahead and invest the money that's required for the sprinkler systems. And until you get to that point where it pencils out, those buildings may sit empty. I've heard also people talk about a vacancy tax. Well, I'll tell you also that that's against state law as well. So, but there's no easy answer on this one.
Thank you, Eric. That concludes our questions. We will now begin your final comments. You have two minutes. At which time, thirty seconds left. Betty will lift the yellow card and indicate you have thirty seconds and then the red card will be done. Eric, we will start with you.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce and everyone here that's attending, and also those people that are on Zoom that are attending, take time out of their day. Um, I also want to thank the District Seven boarders for allowing me to be their council member. I really enjoy being on council. I like contributing to our community. I feel like do a good job at it. I take the time and effort. I take time off my regular job to be in events like this. And being on the council requires you to do personal sacrifice like that. Um, and I'm more than willing to do it. I'm more than willing to serve as the council District Seven representative for the next four years. And I feel that I've done a good job. If I haven't, please let me know where I've messed up. Uh, everybody can improve. Um, absent that, I just want to say again, I've enjoyed being on council and I'm asking for your support, asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Anna?
Thank you. I'd like to once again thank the council, uh, thank the chamber for bringing us all here today. So I am, as I said, running to represent a hard-working district, District Six. And I have now talked to hmm, over fourteen hundred of you and we really do want similar things. We want to live safely. We want to, in our homes, we want to walk safely on our streets. We want things to be better for the next generation than they are for us. Not complaining, just want it better for the people who come after us. This is a, a very practical point of view, it seems to me. It's a very common human view. It's common and common sense, and that's what I would like to bring to council. Uh, I don't want to posture and bring my own ideas up and demand this, that, and the other. I want to work with the other six members of council and with the mayor and with the staff to make Bremerton the place that the people of Bremerton imagine it to be. To move it a little, as the poet writes, to move it a little nearer to the heart's desire. Um, I have big ideas. I've spoken of them now. I'm not going to take up more of your time, but just refer you to my website, moklerforbremerton.com, where each of these big ideas is backed up by practical, common sense ways to implement them. Vote for Anna Mokler and thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Anna. Melissa?
Thank you. Thanks to the Bremerton Chamber of Commerce for off, again, offering this space for us to uh, speak with our community members and uh, constituents. So again, I'm Melissa Watkins and I really hope to have earned your vote in this election. We've been going at this since May um, for five months and it's been a real huge honor to get to know community members. There honestly is no, nothing compares to running for public office um, in a local um, position than running than, than that for being able to get to know your community members. Um, and I think it's been a huge honor um, both to hear what the concerns are for our community and how, and how I can support um, addressing those concerns, but also just to um, become closer as a community that we are. So uh, I feel like so far this has already been a huge privilege. Uh, I, you know, again, I'm a professional, uh, trained social scientist with over a decade of experience um, working on equity and environmental justice programming that includes working within and across different governmental departments and agencies. And so I'm familiar with how to make things happen with different viewpoints and different entities uh, to be able to make sure that we're creating policy that is um, supportive of our community members. I have a background in engaging with community and I think that um, I have a, a practice of putting my actions to my words and I will continue to do that uh, as a city council representative. And again, I thank you for your time and appreciate a vote for Melissa Watkins. And thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Jeff?
I'll, I'll also thank the, the chamber for hosting this event and to, I mean, to everybody for attending that's been up here. Um, there've been a lot of these events, especially for Melissa and I in a, in a longer race, although Eric could probably hold the record for all-time event attendance. Um, but I, I think it's fantastic because, you know, my strongest belief is that if you can get all the voices to the table and get all the ideas out there, you'll, you'll find the best ones. So I think we need to keep having events like these where we put forward uh, solutions and we really see which ones stick um, and are the best ones for our community going forward. I mean, you know, to that end, I've, I've knocked on over two thousand doors in the district, so we're three thousand residents. Um, and just asking what they want to see better in the community and as well, good things that they want to make sure keep going. Um, I've visited small local businesses, asking what they need to thrive, and I've, I've just sat down now with so many local leaders, um, directors of organizations, city officials, just asking how we can all work together and come together to find um, really common solutions that'll benefit everybody. And, and as a city council person, that's what I'll promise to do. I'll promise to have regular office hours, to be available at tents, uh, sorry, available at events, uh, to host regular town halls and periodic topics with, with a focused agenda on what we want to accomplish. Um, and again, go back, knock it on doors when there's projects um, in your area that might affect you and make sure that you get feedback ahead of time and you, you aren't surprised. And address your concerns. Um, you know, totally about my experience being here close to a decade, being involved in local business, city council, the planning commission. Um, you can check out my website, Cawson for Council, for more, or honestly hit me up. Let's sit down and have coffee and chat. Um, but I, I know I have the, the experience here in the district, the passion, um, the professional experience to, to be the best person for this job. So I uh, ask you humbly to please vote Cawson for council. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to all of our candidates who are attending with us today. On behalf of the Bremerton Chamber of Commerce, uh, we want to thank you for uh, your time. I would also like to remind everybody, uh, ballots are out. The uh, pamphlet from the county is out. If you need more information, uh, your ballot should have been mailed on the fifteenth. I have mine. Please make sure you have it in by November second. And look for more information and this forum will be posted on the Bremerton Chamber of Commerce's Facebook page. Thank you for coming out and have a great day. Oh, yeah, thank you. We have another one next week, same time, same place, with the mayor and the candidates for, the candidates for mayor and the candidates for municipal judge here in Bremerton. So with that, we hope to see you next week. Have a great day.